We appreciate all of you that are here this morning. We thank you for your presence. I do want to make one announcement with great. Commissioner Wood is not here today. His mother has passed away yesterday. Her visitation will be at Constone Funeral Home tonight from four till eight p.m. Funeral service will be at Liberty Church at Hennig, but tomorrow at two o'clock. So we want to extend our sympathies to that family, and she's been sick a long time, but we want to make you aware of the reason that he's not here today and the communication of those funeral services. So you all remember them in your prayers. At this particular time, we'll ask Commissioner Jackson, if he will, to lead us in our indications. Then Commissioner Shafer, darling, please. Commissioner Jackson?
Mr. President, Lord, we just thank you so much for the day, for the blessings that are out there, for bringing us out. Lord, we keep you safe, and just thank you for each one that's made it out here today. This guy's a senator out here. Lord, we're so blessed to have such folks to serve with, and I pray your blessings of wisdom upon each one. Those folks that's come out, Lord, we thank you for them. Thank you for the communities that we serve today. God, you've just been so gracious to us thirty years. Lord, we just give you thanks and praise for it all, and thank you, Lord, today for your mercy and your grace. And please, you be continuing in the Wood family, Lord. I pray for your company and their time. I'm sorry. Just thank you for this day and now, Jesus, amen.
Mr. President?
Let's place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Big Sweet, and please. Again, we thank each one of you for your presence, and we begin our agenda, and we will expedite as quick as possible to approve our amendments from the last meeting. Is there any change that needs to be made? If not, then do your motion. We accept what you perceive.
Your second.
Post a second discussion. Minus favor, having known saying aye. Anyone post a objection? Thank you. First item of business is our CDVG grant hearing. We have Mr. Dale Schaefer, his associate from Tarkog. And, Lord, and we'd ask you to come, give us the information that the meeting is made. Thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning. My name is Pauline Patel, and I'm from Tarkog. I have Mr. Dale Schaefer with me today. We're here to conduct the public hearing for CDVG grant that county is applying for. CDVG stands for Community Development Block Grant. It is a program that is administered by ADECA, Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Department, and it utilizes its hard funding to give grants to local and suburbanists to promote the provision of public facility infrastructure to enhance the health and welfare of its citizens. And one of its funds, which is the county fund, that's what we're going to apply for, is designated to meet the needs with grants up to $350,000 for the areas that are low to moderate income, which has these fifty-one percent low to moderate income areas. As part of the grant process, the county has established a citizen participation process for holding public hearing to present proposed projects and solicit opinions and receive comment from its citizens on its proposal for the application to use the CDVG funds. This public hearing presenting a proposed county project, some dealt to ADECA, is part of the process. And through this process, the county's citizens are made aware of both the grant process and the county's proposed grant application. We have your handouts in the back. If anybody needs a handout, we have the handouts and map in the back where the project area is. We are proposing to apply for the 2017 CDVG program, and if you have any questions in general for eligible project activities and the general selection of proposed application, you can ask at the end of this, once I'm done, and/or you can ask County Clerk inviting within seven days from this public hearing, and we'll provide you an answer within seven days, within seven working days from you ask the question. So what is a proposed project? It is a paving and road improvement project. County is using grant funds for materials and county labor inclined to do work. The roads, they're on your, you have a map here, and there were some maps in the back. It's basically using the funds to pay county road six oh eight, one thousand, one thousand one, and one thousand two, right outside four paint city limits, I think in county. The CDVG fund is going to be $256,422, and the DeKalb County local match will be $79,000. So total project cost will be $335,423. So that's the project cost. And we did the survey in the area because, you know, the county itself is not really low to moderate, you know, the whole county's not. So we had to survey the project area, and we did, there were one hundred and forty-nine occupied houses within that project area and four, total of five hundred and seventy-eight beneficiaries. And out of five hundred and seventy-eight beneficiaries, pretty much ninety-nine percent of the people meet the threshold of, you know, being low to mod. So this is a really good project that we could apply for. I mean, that's pretty much it. If anybody has a question, project specific, anything, I can answer that right now.
We appreciate you being here this morning, giving us all explanation of that. A lot of detail that went into it, a lot of survey work that had to be done, and we appreciate all of you ones that had a hand in that particular process that had to be done before we could proceed. But is there anything else that we need to do other than receive this information and y'all proceed in a way that...
At this point, no. The only thing would be, we'll send you some, you know, signature documents later on that will be, that need to be signed. And I think there will be, if I'm correct, Dale, there will be some resolution that needs to be passed.
Yes, ma'am.
Since, you know, we have matching requirement and all that. So just to, you know, say that yes, county's ready to do it. But it doesn't have to be today. It could be next week.
Well, whenever you have that prepared, please forward it to us.
Sure, we'll do it.
Expedite that as quick as possible when you get that done. Any question you gentlemen have about the project?
Now, I know this is a plus for Shane Wood and that district department, and we appreciate him for helping Shane Wood. I always y'all done. Dale Schaefer, good to see you today, sir.
Good to be here, sir.
Thank you.
This is a plus for the people that live in there. I will be a clean road, and they are absolutely, it's a plus for the road department.
Now, let be understood that this is not a done deal.
Right.
Let press and slam that this is not something that is a sure. We can fly it far, and hopefully through all of the process, we will be awarded the project. But we're working at it, so...
And it is a competitive fund, so, you know, there are a lot of, since, you know, the way budgets are going, there is a lot of that unknown there. But it looks, you know, from the number of beneficiaries and everything, it looks pretty good project. So our hopes are high.
Thank you so much. Mr. Schaefer, we appreciate you being here. Been dealing with him for a long years.
I appreciate being able to help you. As I said, as you said, the numbers are very good. This is a project, if you look at cost benefit with the number of person you conduct it, and what you're asking for for them, if, when it gets down there, they score these, it'll depend on what else comes in.
Yes.
You know, down there, this kind of year, look, this is a project that, depending on what your needs are next year. If it doesn't make it this year, by God, like, this is a resubmitable project, because this is, you can't get much better for what you're trying to do with this project. You can only get bumped out by somebody that has more beneficiaries and, you know, a bigger project when they score them. But as I said, I think this looks very good, and we have a lot of hope for this.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. We appreciate it. Anything, anything. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Let us know whatever other procedures we need to undertake. The Department of Engineering, Matt Tuck, thank you, Mr. Braw.
Good morning. I'd like to say, in relation to the grant application, I don't think there's another area in the county more suitable for that than this particular area. So I sure hope that the grant application is approved and we can proceed with it. So it's good to see everybody this morning. I'd like to say thanks to Matt and Ben, who's not here for taking care of my business at the last meeting while I was absent. But it's good to be back. Just to update you real quick on a few things. We're still doing about the same thing we have been. We're still patching. I have some crews that are doing quite a bit of hand patching work right now. We have finished the reclamation projects we had up in District One. We have all those complete. We have the base material hauled out. We just have to do some finished grade work on them, and hopefully Mr. Watts will get in before too long and maybe get those paved for us. He called yesterday. He's hopeful that maybe toward the end of this week, he'll get back up and do some work. I think he likes a few re-surface roads in District Four and likes one double surface road. We're actually doing the finished grade work on it today in hopes that maybe he'll get that district finished up sometime this week or possibly next week. We're going to be starting next week hauling, excuse me, base material to a road down in the south end of the county in District Three. The crew has plowed the road up, and they have it regraded and shaped. And I didn't want to try to mix any material this week because of so much rain. I didn't think it'd be a suitable time to try to haul it, but we're going to get started hopefully on that next week and get that road hauled out. Talked to Shane last week, toward the end of the week, and we were hopeful of getting started, maybe hauling some charred in his district sometime in the next couple of weeks. But with all this rain that we've had, the pit we have to haul out of up there, I've got a feeling we've missed that opportunity at least for now. We've received quite a bit of rain in places, and it don't take much in that pit of sulfur springs to get it to the point you can't do anything with it. We're working right now in Buck's Pocket. As you know, we have a big project, a state-funded project there that we're working on rebuilding the road where the water actually is designed that when the water gets to a level that the pipe can't handle it, it goes over the road. We have the roadway, the slopes poured with concrete. As you know, the pipe had rotted and the concrete had collapsed. That road's been closed now for, I guess, close to a year. We had to get our plan approved through the state, so we did not get start on it last year. We had to wait this year till the water in that creek had quit running. It has dried up. So we have the demolition complete. We've got the pipe installed and backfilled. We have the roadway formed. They're actually finishing off the grade work on the roadway portion. We'll be starting to put our reinforcement mats and things in there later on today. I think Ben had made a proposal at the last meeting that we had got a contractor that's actually going to come in and pour and reap and pour and finish that for us. That's really on a scale that we don't have any, anything to work with. It's just bigger than we've got the equipment to handle. So I'm hopeful maybe that, and I don't know if the contractor will have to work it in in his schedule as to when he pours it, but he's going to pour the roadway first, and then it's going to have to cure for five days before he can put a truck on it to start pouring the slopes. These slopes, everything on them has to be worked by hand. There's no machine that you can use in any way on those. So you can only pour a six-foot section at a time. He'll pour a six-foot, then skip six, pour another. That way, they can reach the middle of that pore by hand and finish it off. So what his intentions are is to pave the roadway, give it the five days of curing time that it has to have, and then he'll come in after that, and he'll pour half of the slopes, and he'll come back the next day and pour the other half of the slopes. So really, in three pours, we'll be finished with it, but it'll take a full week pretty much to accomplish that. But I'm hopeful, the weather right now, they're giving fairly high rain chances for the rest of the week, even into the weekend. I was hopeful that he might pour the roadway on a Thursday or Friday, and then be able to come back the following Wednesday and Thursday, or Thursday and Friday, and pour the slopes. But if that may or may not work out, I don't know what his schedule is, and we, we don't know what the weather's going to do. But we seem to have a real good chance of having rain, and we, we don't need to pour out that amount of concrete and then have it come a big rain on it. So we'll just, we may have to wait till the weather moderates a little bit and we get into a drier time when we feel certain that we can have at least a day's drying on it before it rains on it. Once the surface kind of cures, rain won't hurt it, and it won't stop the slab from curing out. But I would hate to go down there and pour out thirty yards of concrete, and then it come a big rain on it, and it exposed, because it's going to do some damage to the surface on it.
All of our crews are planning on starting back mowing. I know probably some of y'all maybe get some calls about needing roads mowed, but they're probably all going to try to get started back within the next couple of weeks sometime. I know we have two crews
of things planning on starting late this week or first of next week. And we're going to try also to get our second round of herbicide put out, hopefully get them started maybe week after next on that. So I'm waiting for, should be seeing some new trucks rolling in just any time. I notice Matt has a finance package thing on the agenda. As you know, we're getting new Kenworth trucks to be delivered this month. We'll sell the trucks we're running now next month, and then we'll sell the ones we're getting. Waiting on now, these will be sold next spring. So we've actually inserted a cycle of trucks mid-year, which is something we've never done before, and I hope we never do it again, because it's, I'm sure it's going to cost me to have to work some overtime in the shop just to get things changed over and get these trucks ready to go to the auction. But I'm looking forward to the change. I think it's going to be good for us. I feel confident that it is, and I know we've got a good guarantee on the trucks we're running right now, a lot better than we would have had if we had ran them till next spring. So that's pretty much what's going on. If you have any questions or comments, I'll ask them before if I can.
When we complete the three, four, five projects south into District Three, we have in our district now many, many miles of dense graded roads going to be, need to be retrieved.
Yeah.
How do we stand as far as the distributor being almost ready to go?
I'm waiting on some parts. The truck we've been using for that was an old gas tanker, aluminum tanker, but it was plumbed with metal pipe, and that pipe had rotted and deteriorated to the point that I didn't feel safe putting it back out on the road. So we took the bed off and stripped the old plumbing off of it. But I'm waiting on a machine shop to fabricate maybe some fittings to put back on it. But hopefully, you know, they're expecting the fittings just any time, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks, possibly have it back up and going. If we cannot, we may have to try to do it with another truck that we have, so...
Thank you, Mr. Braw. Any other question? If not, why? We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is vehicle surplus. Mr. Sharp?
We have a vehicle that's an old six Chevy pickup that has been sitting up here in the parking lot for, that's CCO six seven six, and we need to declare its surplus.
You hear Mr. Sharp's statement in question, declaring the pickup surplus. If not, do your motion in honor of the request. Your second?
Second.
Motion second and discussion. Minus favor, having known saying aye. Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Quit with financial resolution. Mr. Sharp?
We have a resolution. It's going to be with Bancor for the financing of these vehicles that we're purchasing right now. And I said we'll be doing this again in about five or six months, so I would have a question that we approve the resolution for financing with Bancor.
Thank you. Sharp in question. I'm sorry, the resolution. It's something that we do every year when we change out these trucks, but necessary, it's one of those necessary things we have to. If there is no questions, I...
Just the same, Ben, we...
Yes, sir. Any other question? If not, then do your motion in honor of the request. Motion second and any discussion. Minus favor, having known saying aye. Anyone post a statement? Thank you. Motion carried. Revenue commission personnel, Mr. Wood?
Morning.
Morning.
The previous meeting, we had come forward about Barbara Sanders retiring and did some interviews over the last couple of weeks and had those jobs posted, had that job posted, and would like to recommend we hire Sheila Overby to fill that position. She has previously worked in the tag office doing the same job. We're hiring her back for her. So she had left her a better opportunity about ten years ago, but that one's kind of played out at this point, and she had come back in, interviewed well, and so I'd like to recommend we hire Sheila Overby for that position.
This is our position, cap, Mr. Wood?
It is.
You hear, Mr. Wood, it's a recommendation in question. Minus favor, in honor of the request, letting them saying aye. Or your motion, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Motion second. For your second, motion second and discussion. Minus favor, having known saying aye. Anyone post a statement? Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Crowe with his software. Mr. Crowe?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'd like to bring before you guys this morning, the probate office is following suit with the majority of the rest of the county offices in going away from the AS400 as their business package. The AS400 is super outdated. The server is over ten years old, things like that. So this is going to match the probate office with Tyler's software provider and enable those guys to work seamlessly across each other, as both those offices do things, recording deeds, things like that. So this will make that integration seamlessly between the two departments. So I'd like to bring that before you guys this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, any questions concerning that? I think you may explain something to the back.
This costs the...
It will be in the...
It's done.
We'll take off some, there'll be some additional software initial charges, and then there'll be, there's been a, there's a, there's a monthly maintenance cost.
It'll be about a thousand up front, two thousand month after, is that it?
Yes, yes, that is correct. And the, this will not go into effect in the current budget year, because they just simply cannot work them into the schedule. So they will actually go live after October of this year. So if that answers the question a little better, maybe.
Any other question? If there is no other question for Mr. Crowe about the software contract, then I entertain the motion that we accept Mr. Crowe's recommendation.
That most important.
Second, motion second and discussion. Minus favor, letting them saying aye. Anyone post a statement? Thank you.
I'd also like to mention, Mr. Crowe, he does a good job of what you do. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. On a side note, this, this is software only, this contract? We had put in place back last year, I believe it was around November, I brought before you guys a server hardware contract, and you guys graciously let me proceed with that. Counting this implementation, that server contract that you let me go with, currently is saving us about $45,000 in equipment that we have not had to buy with this. So I'd like to extend my gratitude on that. It's made my life a lot easier.
Thank you, sir. We can use a four or five somewhere.
We can use it on that software.
It does. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your work. Sheriff's Office personnel, Mr. Edmonds?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Got several that we're replacing. You want me to run through all this at the same time?
Go through it all at the same time. Please, then, if there's any questions, you can attend that.
Well, we'd like to hire Robert Paris as a part-time deputy to replace Craig White. We would ask that you approve of dispatch position change from, for Jordan Williams and Kenneth Cordell. Jordan is full-time. He wants to go part-time, and Kenneth is part-time. He wants to go full-time. So just switch those two. Accept the termination of Morgan McCurdy and Jared King, and accept the resignation of Leanna Gonzalez. We would like to transfer Leah Hitchcock Davis from part-time corrections officer to full-time corrections officer to replace Gonzalez. We would ask that you hire Jerika Brumelow as a part-time RN to replace Morgan McCurdy. We'd like to ask you hire Kayla Ignazio as a part-time corrections officer. Hire Sebastian Gomez as a part-time corrections officer. Hire Samuel Young as full-time corrections officer to replace Seth Moore. Hire Caleb Gregor as a full-time corrections officer to replace Clay Monro.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. Is this revenue neutral?
Yes.
Is there anybody there to replace King?
No, I don't, not, not on the plate so right now.
Not yet.
Not yet.
You gentlemen saw the printed version of this. Any question about it for Mr. Edmonds?
And I also to part-time positions, those that's got new positions. That's a good thing, because that helps us to relieve overtime of people. So I'm always give a part-time if it's...
Are you talking about the part-time new positions?
Yeah.
That's good.
Any other question? If not, then do your motion in honor of the request. Your second?
Second.
Motion second and discussion. Minus favor, letting them saying aye. Anyone post a statement? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Sheriff Paris wants to address y'all.
Mr. Harris?
Thank y'all. Sounds like we drained the swamp over there like an old rubs, and I think we did, all in one weekend. But things like that happen, but I really don't need this for security reasons written down, but y'all do know that we've had like, we've had some sickness, and we've had this, and we've had that as far as SROs go. And of course, Mr. Ramos, you know, retired with, had some cancer, and then we've got, we've got Tony in ICU having a horse incident over. He's in hospital now. Of course, Craig White, you know, retired, and we've got four SROs that we don't have right now. And some of those have been part-time people. It's been really hard to find part-time folks. We had a guy from Meadowville County that had worked fourteen years on their task force. I actually lived about fifteen minutes from Crossville in the edge of Alton. When Sheriff Inchican found out he was going to go to work for me, he offered him to come back part-time with him, thirty thousand, and give him a new truck. So he's going to keep him down there. But we, we thought we had one of them figured out, but we are trying to replace them. It's just, it's just hard to find folks, and you just can't put anybody in a school. And I mean, it's just, you just won't do it. So we're going to try our best, you know, to find some folks, and Michael and Tex and everybody's been working on it. And, you know, we called around trying to get folks that have retired. Some of them don't want to come back and do that like we work them, you know, all the time on a part-time deal at the school, but some of them do. So I just want to let y'all know that. We're doing the best we can. Well, I guess what we got to do, but thank y'all. Hi, Sheriff. What's the status on Tony Black? Well, I really feel good about it. Yesterday, I went, me and Sabrina went to the hospital yesterday, and he, he was only saying one word. And when I went in, Paula was trying to get him roused up. The minute that I spoke to him, he opened his eyes, and Paula said, "Do you know who that is?" And he looked up, and he said, "Jim Bob, Jim Bob, Jim Bob." He said that three times. But before I left, he had, he had called me Jimmy Harris, and then Jimmy Harris, and then right before I left, he said, "Sheriff, I love you." So and then yet last night, they sent me a picture of him sitting up in the bed, like sitting on a, on a, you know, ice or something. So I think he's like really improving, like just, you know, it's one day at a time, but that was like a big leap. So he may be back down today. I don't know. But he's, you know, he's really, you know, he's in pretty bad shape right now. So but Tony's been a good asset to us, and, you know, we don't want to see anything. We sure don't want to lose him. We don't want to see anything, you know, we want him to improve. So but he's doing better.
Well, let him know he's in all of it.
I will do that. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. The next item is unclaimed funds. Dingles access?
Yeah, we have, it's just two different things. One of them, the first page here is accession land sales, and that's money that's come in. in, the people who do the tax, sales tax, tax on property, the sales there and some excess. And after it has been here for three years, then that can be transferred into the general fund. We've got $3,500 on that. And then the second page is what's called unclaimed fiduciary funds. And those are just an odd range of things where it's items that we stuck in there that were unclaimed. And then after they have been in that for ten, for ten years in that fund, then we can transfer those monies over into the commission. So there's about $4,000 there. So my recommendation will be to make these transfers, it totals about $5,000 to the general fund from the unclaimed fiduciary fund and excess land support.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any questions concerning that? If not, to hear motion of honor, question. Your second? Motion second in discussion. All in favor, if anyone's saying aye. Anyone post a statement, Jack. Thank you.
Chairman, could I, if I had one question on the prior situation, Sheriff Office, there's one more item to them that...
We have, we believe that. Rural Public Transportation Personally, Mr. Sharp.
I think in a previous meeting, Ms. Brewer had sent over a request to make Greg Welsh a substitute driver over there. He has since determined that he doesn't want to do that. So she is requesting to, to hire Donna Joe Fricks as a substitute bus driver for that rural public transportation program.
Mr. Sharp, any questions concerning that recommendation from Councilman A. If not, to hear motion of honor, their question. Your second? Motion second in discussion. Minus favor, if anyone's saying aye. Anyone post a statement, Jack. Thank you. For information on you that are here, I would appreciate the help of our friends with the media. Special election will be August fifteenth. That is a week to date. And the election will be held this year in the county, Gresham polling places. The runoff election will be held at Fort Payne City Hall. We're moving from the VFW building to Fort Payne City Hall due to the fact that the runoff will be during the time of the FAG. So the city, Fort Payne, graciously letting us use that cell because it meets all the standards. And we just wanted to make you aware of that and make you aware of your special election that's coming up for the U.S. Senator, Phil Senator Sessions slot in the U.S. Senate. Any question about that? Want to make you aware of that. Our next meeting will be August fifteenth. That's next week here in the chamber. The reason that we're moving that up a week is because of the conference that's being held that will conflict with some of our schedules the next week. So we will have our second meeting this, this one next week, next Tuesday, here in the chambers on August fifteenth at the same time. Y'all, that concludes our agenda for today. Go hear motion with John.
Make a motion with John.
Being without Jackson, Lord. Thank you.